Like to go ahead and call the board work session to order. Basically, we were basically going to change the agenda a little bit. I'll go ahead and go through the front. Is there any public on here? You gladly submit your questions or anything that John would see and then bring to his board's attention. We will have our regular board meeting on Thursday, August 18th at 12 o'clock. And it'd be a better opportunity for in public than what? I would like to ask the board if they would be up for changing the agenda. We'll call the meeting order, the points order, but then go right into executive session. We have a time restraint on that so that we can get a call in here. And it'll be an executive session for 45 minutes. In 45 minutes, and so come back into it at 1:45 hopefully.
And so that's what about that doing up? Were their executive sessions going to be like, we're not going to be decisions?
No, there's yeah, there's no decisions to be made. We're just getting the information that we need. This time, John, you want to take us out? Yeah, we're back in, came out of executive session long enough to let people know that we're going to have to be back in executive session until 2:30. We still have things to be heard. No decisions are being made. It's just briefly gathering information that's needed. So we'll be back at 2:30. Thank you. Welcome back. Back in order, we just came out of executive session where we had discussions, but no action was taken, no vote taken. At this time, I was hoping that Curtis would be here, but he's not. Tim, is there any updates you want to give us at all?
I'll give you a couple of short, quick updates. Number one, we are, we have Kelly did sign earlier this week our agreement for our lease for the antennas on the roof. So they have 60 days to do their diligence to review everything. And at that point, we should move forward and get that $800,000 for that lease. And then that also includes potential future income if they, if they find other people to put stuff on our roof related to, you know, whether it's Verizon or other types of companies like that. As long as it doesn't interfere with anything going on inside the building or interfere with any of the equipment on the roof, we will allow them to do that. And then we will get 50% of any revenues achieved off of that. So there is possible future revenues coming from that. Yes.
Did that have to go through the city?
No, it just went through. We already have a lease up there. So we're just selling it out and allowing more. But they will do that legwork if we add anything else up there. No, there's, they're, they're just antennas. You know, there's some up there already. There has been for a very long time. We just haven't ever negotiated getting what's going right. And now because of the technology changes so fast, they're not really renewing or redoing those agreements. They're basically buying out those leases and get a lump sum. And then you can expand on that with other companies.
Tim, how long is the lease for you?
It's 99 years. It has been reviewed by our legal and by Kelly. We did a lot of back and forth to get the language correct and so that it would protect our interests and give us the right to say no to, we will not allow certain things to go up there, obviously. Then, you know, yes, I had, I had a lot of heartburn with being such a long lease, but because the technology at some point, whether for satellites up into space, you know, 10 years from now, this might become obsolete.
Is there any maintenance requirements?
Not from us, no.
And is, is it going to be in the old, by the old hospital wing or at the new hospital?
They, they'll have access to anywhere except for the admin wing because we know we're going to share that down. So like we crossed that out of that lease currently where wound care is and some dietitian, that's where Verizon and AT&T have had equipment up there for quite some time. Actually, in between the admin wing and that wing, there's some equipment down there. There was a generator, they have a propane tank. That's been there forever. That's the goal is trying to keep everything in that area. It's dependent on what's presented, you know, they don't have to go through an approval process from the hospital before anything else could ever be out.
So again, 99 years is not a long time. Is there any escape plans in the event the hospital has to be replaced or remodeled or incentive demolished?
Yes, there are. There's, there's a lot of language in there to protect us so that we can work on those steps if something comes up.
Good.
You were, you had stepped out, so we kind of jumped in and left him in.
Well, yeah, just another, the, one of the other big things is air handler four does, does go out and quit. It was, it's 1989 piece of air handling equipment that actually sits out in this part here. That has to be replaced. So we're working through getting pricing on that. So the, the money that's coming in from the lease will cover the majority of that. So it'll cover all of that. We'll work it through trying to get the best price to get that unit replaced. Cause that does serve medical records, quality, kind of that corner of the basement there. So between the price will also be availability.
That's a tricky one right now.
Well, we're going with the train, which is what we put on the lobby in Dominic Clinton. You know, it could be eight to 10 weeks. Those are very big things. No, that's actually a short period.
Yeah, it really is.
So we're supposed to get all the quotes in by the middle of next week. So we got more of an idea at that point.
Any words coming from that again?
The power lease. So Neil, is there something you wanted to decide what we're worried about?
Sure, yeah, I have a few if you don't mind. I, I just wanted to report that Carolyn St. Charles and we had another fellow by the name of Ernie that came here and did a mock survey for the hospital. And actually that report was just sent to Mike, I believe, today. So we can get started on that. And then the last time you did get to meet Sherri Van Ander and she did a compliance review. And she submitted that report to Mike so that there's areas that we can start focusing on. And then for your next board meeting, I've asked Faith Jones, who heads up our care coordination and lane program. She's going to be visiting with Dr. Miller in the clinics relative to care coordination. It's the Medicare program on chronic care. And you already have some of that in place. And she's going to focus primarily on oncology and orthopedics to start with when she's here. And I've also asked her to give a short presentation to the board members on the, on your board meeting. Just a little bit about care coordination, what it means and the opportunities. Just about all of the hospitals, all the, not just about all of the hospitals that we have put in care coordination. We've seen anywhere from like year one, about 50,000 to 75,000 increase in revenue to the practices. But after, after two years and three years, most of the mature practices that have at least 200, 2,000 Medicare patients that meet that requirement. You're up, we're up to about 400,000 to 500,000 of additional net revenue for those practices. And it's, and it's really at no additional, very little additional expense on the practices because you're already doing a lot of the work. You're not, you're just not collecting and billing for it. So she's going to give you a short presentation on that. And then Joyce Smith from our revenue cycle will be back on the ninth through the 11th. And I'm happy to report that your revenue cycle people had collections of 9,069,000 for the month. And that's the highest you've had since, since the beginning of this year. So, you know, credit to Mike and the team, the financial people are leaning into it and starting to get some, some good, better things. Other than that, unless you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Good, good work.
So going back a little bit, have you had any resolutions or any contract that has he dealt with? Not at all. Then we'll move into more important part, Curtis. How's that?
We're always fighting.
The one thing I did want to talk about, and you should have your board package that John has put together for you, was the MSC competency. And that is for the OB RNs. That is required by the surveyors to ensure competency for exams done on, on women who are expecting. It's quite an extensive training and competency each year. It comes up yearly. And it's one of the competencies that is required to be included by the board and it's been acknowledged. So what happens is the chief of the director of OB, which currently is Dr. Williams, he makes sure that the trainer is confidential. In this case, typically it would be the OB managers. But in her absence, it was Pat Myers who did that and has been in our OB probably now for 15, 20 years. So she's very confident in that. And then has gone through the steps to make sure our OB nurses, they cannot do an MSC unless they've been signed up on this. But this doesn't require board approval. They acknowledge this.
I guess we make a motion to approve the medical screening exam 2002 qualified medical professional nurses format that you have sent phone with the names of those nurses that are certified.
Certainly. Need discussion. All in favor? Thank you. A good job, Curtis.
That was good job.
Yeah, all of them. You got to pass that on. I, I will look and know they're working hard. There's a lot of changes going up there. There's a little bit of unsettled that we're trying to work through as we search for new OB manager. At this point, there has been no applicants. But we'll continue to work on that. As far as the other units, everything is going good. We still continue to have a nursing shortage, which is really starting to cripple. Staffing today spent three hours watching telemetry. Which is, and there's a lot of other things to do. That's not the best choice. But it's necessary for patient safety. So we continue to try and get staff and get the other things going. Working on that. I think I don't know if I shared, we did lose one of our our RNs who've been RN for us almost 19 years, Ann Billoford. She passed away last week. Still active, hardworking, well loved in the organization. Went to her viewing on Tuesday. It was like old times coming home. There were so many nurses that used to work here there. Did you recruit? Did I? You know, and it's weird because I, it's funny. I, I think Annie, knowing who Annie was, she loved the hospital and she worked at one point out and she was brilliant. And if you ask her why he worked so much, her response was, it's my hobby. I love being a nurse. And that shows, that showed the work and compassion she had for everybody. And it was up there. They were all supportive people who went to review. I went there and we've been there. Thank you. So they were talking and they've come to me and it's funny and everyone was just hugging, hugging and that. And I asked how things were going and I find, you know, we've got openings and hope we would love to come home. Which I even love better. We would love to come home. And I said, they'd get on the website and apply, please. And a couple of CNA's too that used to be here said they want to come home. So hopefully it'll work. Several of those individuals, I do have phone numbers. So I will give them until Monday. I'll check with the board and say, are there applicants there? Please push them through. And if they're not, then I'll start making calls. Because these are quality people that look back. Her, her service is actually that her cert, that the viewing was that the service is coming up. The service will be on the ninth at St. Augustine's. So I need a bunch of applicants to take those applications. I'll be honest, standing at the door is the, the, oh. But, but she loved it enough here.
I mean, that, that was one, as I was going through and meeting with people. You know, I mean, I knew her son and I can still know her son, but the people up there, the way that they talk about her and some of the nurses and the way they talked about, you know, in fact that they pay attention to what's going on at the hospital now.
They do. And Ramona was, it was it was flattering. I'll, I'll tell a little bit on myself. He called me personally. To tell me that his mother spoke highly of working for me and best loved me. And I told him I thought the world of her. And by extension, love him too, because he's part of the family and he is part of our EMS. And it's just, it's, it, it can be good, but it can be bad. The staff works so well together. They love each other that much is why I think we're doing this to survive. But it's neat because we do care for her. And then sometimes I've always said to people, at the end of every meeting, I say, go out and love each other. Go out and love each other because we have to support. So we have to care about each other. And the people up in this hospital, they're in all departments, care about each other. And I think that's why he was short, short staffing, we're giving good player. Getting good compliments. You know, they get the bad ones here and there, but we get a lot of good compliments despite the challenges.
Question. I'm sorry, I may be way off base on this, but I know other hospitals do it, but do we, do we, or have we explored sign-on bonuses for nurses?
Oh, yes. That's out there.
Are we doing that?
We have a couple. The, the issue is, it's, it's the, the number of nurses. Everyone needs a nurse now. They estimate by 2023, we'll be down, I think they said 1.2 nurses a patient. This is a
So we, we pay bonuses is the question. We, we give bonuses to our nurses.
And I answered that. Yes, yes, you do. SCAD just started offering those sign-on bonuses for their nurses quit and went to work for the traveling nurses because they could make more money. The fact that they didn't get, they didn't get a retaining bonus, you know. And so that tore some nurses off, they quit and then went to work for the travelers and SCAD ended up hiring them back for travelers who was paying a ton more. So you gotta be very, very careful.
Yeah, all right.
I can see that. And that didn't happen to us. We did not, there's any of our nurses or travelers. It's just been through attrition and the fact that they're it is something about the money, but it's, it's actually just the, the lack of nurses out there. And it's getting hard even to get a traveler in. Curtis, even leaving the profession. Profession COVID has a huge drop in nursing work versus he's been Curtis, we've been talking about it earlier. You know, very appreciative of all the effort you're putting in and stepping up to the plate. We're concerned about you. We don't want to burn you out and we don't want to burn staff out. So you and the staff need to know that you guys are a high concern of ours. You know, that we want to, you know, pride and do whatever we can to, you know, recruit people in here and everything, retain, retain the main thing. But we value you and all the staff. And I appreciate that. I think at this point, if the military is the reason I lost several nurses recently. So hopefully that will stop. But even Loretta, who's a department of one in HR, when she found out the loss of Annie, she took time to make cookies and brought it up to the staff. That's the kind of compassion this hospital has across the department. And I'm getting referrals from other people, reaching out and calling those as well, trying, because those are a little bit more positive than just a blind applicant. And now I'm hoping that some of these people are very sincere about coming home. Follow online. Get word out there. We are concerned about all of you. And I do think, probably because they did a, even though we don't want travelers, we got three travelers in ED, which really made it, it's made a huge difference with that. And in particular, because now my staff is just funding. I don't have the ability to shut people over to support like the last. So we're, we're, we're making steps. We're moving together. And then the team is all, all gets it.
When you just had a, the census was quite low about a week ago and it doubled. It seemed like overnight.
It dropped to a low of five in the day. And by evening, we did six. So we're back to a lot. So it's, it's, it's hitting there now. I think we could have the opportunity, we did have someone reach out today for a swing bed. Women at the hospital. So let's look into that. I just would like to get the staff into where we could fill the best capacity in 19 again. And that would also help with the search with the borders in ED. And opening the ICU again with support. As well as we take some patients that need a higher level of care is not at the same.
Oh, that's how is the transition or are you moving with the observation patients going or the borders being moved into observation?
Not right now because I don't want the staff to do it. We are work. We're good.
We got it done. We just got our staff.
Yeah. And it'll be fairly easy. And, and that's something we used to do. We used to take and bring them along in Florida. They would still be ED patients. Because that forced the top of the line to come in and patient that they figured they're safe and they're allowed by transfer out. So that will stay as an ED patient. It'll just be a different location. That's ready. The rooms are ready. All right. Get staff. It'll be good. Any other questions? Any other questions for Curtis? Thank you, sir. And if you know someone wants to sign in, please. We were hoping it would draw more people.
What can a vet be a nurse?
Or something on return.
Maybe a nurse be a nurse?
We have two volunteers right here.
You're great. You're a nurse.
Actually, I still am.
Still am, so.
It says conflict of interest between
That's right. I've volunteered her several times. Anyway, thank you. We'll move on here. Mike, I know Kelly's not here, so did, is there any finance update we needed to do?
I don't think there's anything we need to do with actually taking anything. He's, he's wrapping up to follow. I think we're about three million down. If I read his note right earlier today on the book review. You know, from last month to this month, about three million down. And I think it was in lab radiology and a couple of places. Pharmacy was a big place that we were doing. They are already. So we're looking at that. We don't have any statements for you yet. And he is working on coming up with a timeline around the 23 budget. So we'll need him to start rolling into that in late this month, September. He's putting together putting together, working with T L O capital equipment list and all things that go with the 23 budget. So that'll be rolling that soon. And let's see, we're working, we're going to work on a little mini strategic plan update, not a deep dive, but just take a look at it from last year, see what's changed, maybe insert a few things there. Go over clinic updates. We're still working on Freeland and the behavioral health program. Had an interview with a behavioral health person next week. Some of our clinics, we've had to shorten the time period. Not in the open on Sundays and some afternoons with that time back. They're just stacking. So if you hear about some of that, we are recruiting that look at a diagonal health person that we've got. We're, we're looking at failing the practitioners as I ever recruiter in the and we are, so is our real.
Any news on the PDA and the physician for the feeling thing?
Yes, we, we've got an operator. And so we're mulling them over. I'll be talking to them this weekend. We either call all of our candidates every weekend just to say, how are you? Sometimes we just talk about the weather, sometimes I'll tell you what's your health. You'll consider our offer. So Emily Fox is the same way. I'll talk to her this weekend. She's the only G1 here. She'll be on third if we can get them. So she had, Emily Fox has come out and done a phone call of the G1. She's liked what she's seen so far. So I think we've got a good shot at it. And if we can do that, then we could be delivering five of the babies here, here or not. The branch will give y'all an update on those as they proceed, but we did apply for the behavioral health draft for three million. The Washington district hospital grant in the final four. We'll see how those come in. But I think those are going to be, the, the union raise is going into effect and it went into effect on July 31st. It'll be in the first paycheck on the 18th for everybody. We're happy with that. So hopefully. Those might like, right now. We'll have more detail reports of the upcoming board.
How is the nine plus million that Neil said we made last month figure into minus three million that were down supposedly?
Well, we got a gentleman that can answer the question, but let him get sat down and then your question, your question was what?
Neil mentioned that we were up nine, let me say 9.6 for the revenue for the last month. And that's the highest it's been since.
Oh, no, he was talking about our capital stable that we were, our capital stable collections were in revenue cycle. Our revenue collections were up. That's cash.
Okay.
That's cash collected.
Yeah.
Doesn't have anything to do with well, it will downstream, but not everything they do will be in. I told you we're about three million down. Gross revenue last month.
So yeah, let me fill in the blanks a little bit. So so yeah, what Neil's referring to is a balance sheet. And what I'm going to talk about is the profit and loss. So in healthcare, you have the gross charges and then you've got the deductions from revenue. And so what I look at before the month is closed, I just take an immediate look at the gross charges. And what Mike's referring to here is if you take the month of July this year versus the same month of July last year, our gross charges are down $3.5 million. And then if you say about half of that, I'm just rounding it, is net patient revenue. So we'll deduct all those charges will collect maybe 50%. So then if you take that number and call it 1.7 million last month, when I gave the financial report, the net patient revenue for the six months that ended June was down 4.7 million for June this year, the six months versus same period last year. So then if you add that first number I gave you, the 1.7 estimate to the 4.7, you end up with about 6.5 million on a net patient revenue that were down this year versus the prior seven month period. So that's, that's a preliminary look at the seven months where, you know, we're the 4th of August. So we're, we will aim to close the books later on in the month. Couple of things are happening. It's HealthTech and I are working closely together with my team in finance.
Couple of things are happening, it's uh Health Tech and I are working closely together uh with my team uh in finance. And we're gonna be implementing the the tool that we, you guys have heard about since Health, Health Tech. Took on the management contract and it's called Optimum. And it has a section on financial reporting, it has a section on productivity and some other data points in there. Even though the underlying data in it is needs a lot of work, uh, we're in a, what's called a general ledger cleanup project right now. And and so, but we don't want to wait until we have it all perfect, we're gonna go ahead and start the model. And a beta test, and so it'll just be between Health Tech and the accounting department, working out the bugs. Cause we wanna get the bugs pretty much worked out before we start presenting the material. To the finance committee and the board, so that's where we're at. But those are all very time consuming but well worthwhile projects, and I have a, I have a list of all my. High priority projects that we've got in various stages of progress. But, yeah, and and pardon me for showing up late, I was putting out fires today. Uh, what you were doing was important, and so I was trying to, well, we've got a bunch of stuff, we're really low on staffing in several departments, including our. Our our only senior accountant went out on indefinite medical leave, and so we're scrambling to. To get some staffing in place, we've got some potential help on the way next week, so. But anyway, all that to say, uh. That is, I call, I use the term headwinds, so we've got this headwinds that we're basically saying. We're keeping a close eye on the patient volumes and the revenue, and we're very thankful. That the, we got the bond financing in place, cause that gives us a little bit of breathing room to make, we don't want to make snap decisions and just arbitrarily say, okay. Reduction in force for all these departments, we'd rather be surgical. And go after, you know, is this department overstaffed, is this one understaffed? Relative to the patient volumes, so that's kind of. Mike and I's our our mindset on that, and I think the rest of the executive team, we just. We want to make smart decisions and we want them to be based on evidence and data, and so. That's the approach we're gonna take.
Okay. Yeah, I totally. We don't have any comments or anything like that, so we'll be presenting those. Oh, I got it.
Oh, you got? Now, our next board meeting will be August eighteenth at twelve o'clock. Here, Mike, Brandon Don't.
I don't know whether it'll be laughter, but if you order to go, that's okay.
There anything else that the board would like to bring forward and discuss?
I know, some of the journey, second.
Second, all fair. Thanks, everybody.
And if any of you know, Daryl, Terrell in H I N, who's he's served here for twenty four years.